Good evening, everyone. And welcome to McClure High School for tonight's Ferguson-Florissant School District's School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Mr. Curtis Downey, and I am the Administrator here at McClure High School, and I will be the Forum's Moderator for this evening. Before we begin tonight, this question and answering session, we would like to acknowledge and thank McClure High School's BTSO and its President, Mrs. Kelly Gillyard, for hosting this event. The McClure BTSO is encouraging all local stakeholders to be sure to cast their vote for School Board on April the 2nd. On April the 2nd. I would also like to give a warm welcome to the Principal of the High School, Mr. Gary Stiller. And real quickly, before we go any further, if you have any electronic devices or if you have a cellphone, just a quick reminder to turn those off before we begin. The structure for tonight's School Board Forum is as follows. For the first portion of our forum, all four candidates will receive three questions on the following topics: qualifications, motivation, and vision prior to tonight. Each candidate will have four minutes to answer each question. For the second portion, time permitted, we will have questions submitted from the audience in which the candidates will have two minutes to answer each of the questions. If you would like to ask a question, please write it on a note card and turn it in to McClure Parent liaison, Mr. Derek Robinson. Please remember, now I'll question, all the questions from the audience are going to be read, probably due to timely constraints. This forum is intended to be a very dignified event. The audience tonight is asked to remain respectful in their demeanor. Please refrain from any applause and open commentary during this event. At this time, I would like to introduce the four candidates in order of by name. Mr. Chuck Hinson. Mrs. Leslie Hawtai. Mr. Keith Brown. And also Mr. Larry Thomas, who isn't here this evening, but if he comes in, he will definitely allow him to see. The candidates drew cards as to the order of speaking tonight. The order of response for the first question will be as follows. Mr. Brown. Mr. Thomas. Mr. Hinson. And then Miss Hawtai. For the remaining questions, the order will be rolling as the next candidate in line will have an opportunity to speak first. Candidates, let's begin session one with the formal questions. Candidates, if you would like a question to be repeated, please feel free to ask. Mr. Brown, we'll begin with you. Tell us about your background. What experiences and qualifications would you bring to the Ferguson-Florissant School District that would benefit the school system?
Well, I thank you for allowing me to be here today. This is a very fun time for me because I'm at McClure High School and sometimes being a substitute teacher. And this time, I'm very pleased to join you very much. Simply stated, my background, I grew up in Southern California, Berkeley, California, and was drafted into Vietnam and served in military. Went to college in Southern California, had a DS degree in Christian Education at Lyle College. I am a retired T-11A and American Airlines flight attendant. I had an experience in the world many times over as a result of that job. And I have experienced many different cultures because of the job. I'm currently employed at Excrisurance. I am a resident in the district. I have been since I was a teenager. I know the district from the taxpayer standpoint. Also, my child is a school kid in this district, primarily here. As a result, I know the district from the parents' standpoint. Also, my son in this district, who I have two family members. I know this district from the classroom standpoint. So those are part of my qualifications. My most important qualification was the classroom here at McClure. I believe that we can improve on the education that we currently have. I do not believe that the content that we teach is necessarily wrong or bad. But what I do believe is that the classroom must be a teachable environment, and I think that is a major problem that we have here in the district. The classroom sometimes is not as teachable as it should be in a district because of typically student behavior. Now, I firmly believe that we need to make the consequences for the students. That we have a consistent and a firm enough type of consequence to grab their attention. And you recall, when I first moved into this area driving down the street here on Elizabeth, I got pulled over, was given a tip. I hadn't paid that $150, that was 20 years ago. I've never forgotten it. It was consequences. And I think that I am like you, and students are also like me. One minute left. Thank you very much. And I think that the consequences that we can give our students will firm them up and make them teachable and far better than they currently are. Now, I think that we need to be very careful that the students that are disrupted and stealing away time from the students that are here trying to learn. We must correct that, and that will be a tremendous advantage to our education. That's partly some of the experience that I had throughout the district and in Southern that I saw the candidates correct. And I think that's an advantage that I can have and see that, being able to hopefully do something about that.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Hinson, would you like the question repeated again?
Same question.
Same question.
I too want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and certainly the district that hosts this and gives us the opportunity to talk. With regard to my background, I graduated from the School of Architecture at Washington University and spent 12 years in the industry, working for a number of companies here in St. Elizabeth. And I am a product of the Ferguson-Florissant District. I've had two other siblings, my older brother and younger brother, to graduate. And a proud parent, having now seen two of my children graduate from the same high school that I attended. In 1986, I saw an ad in the paper that there was a committee convening on the Main Street to develop downtown, looking to redevelop downtown Ferguson. And as an architect, I thought that would be an opportunity for me to attend. Oh, but I just want to first hold me at Ferguson. And I walked into that meeting, and 20 years later, I walked into a number of meetings of volunteers, efforts. I supported this community in a number of areas. This forced me to sit down and really look at some of those things and put them down in the paper. I really can't get it all out in four minutes, but I've spent a great deal of time supporting efforts of this school district even prior to serving on board now to terms, certain paths to attendance and asking to be a part of certain committees, which I was glad to. Welcome to do. I have supported the Main Street revitalization of downtown Ferguson. I led the proud committee from its inception in 1995 before reaching out to unity and diversity, which I think really had a great deal to do with sustaining the sustainability of life and quality of life in this town. As the Chair of that organization, I was very proud to be a part of what I think in 1994 was a confidence on diversity and inclusion and acceptance, which was probably the first of its kind in the same metropolitan area and to be a part of that. I've also coached and mentored students from all the institutions here, boys and girls, hundreds of kids. With regards to Ferguson, that's in Ferguson Baseball Association, Florissant Football Association, St. John and James. I've seen many of those students graduate and go on to do some wonderful things. Each and every day, I am envious of the opportunities that the administrators and the teachers have because they have a chance to change the world, one child at a time. I'm a firm believer in the development of an institution of learning. In my two terms here with the Ferguson-Florissant School District, we've accomplished some really great things. We were one of 21 school districts across the nation to be recognized as an overachiever because of my graduation rates. Graduating at 95% in three high schools. 85-plus percent of the kids going on to post-high school education. A less than 4% dropout rate. Let me tell you, there's very few school districts in this country that can say that. Also having seven Gates Millennium Scholars. I was with some folks out of Seattle. That's probably the only state that has schools that have graduated more, and as you know, Microsoft is there in Seattle. So I am very proud to be a part of what we have done, cultural competence education, talking about how equity and inclusion. This district is on the brink of doing many positive things. We've got some great people, we have great superintendent, and I am pleased to be a part of this and look for one more term. I'd like one more term to really see history made, I think we will.
Thank you. Mrs. Hawtai.
Can you hear me? No. Okay. I would like to thank the BTSO and McClure High School and Mr. Steller for having us here tonight. And I would like to tell you a little bit about my background. I have been married for 42 years to my partner, who fortunately can go through everything and gets pulled into everything I do, and I really appreciate that. I've had daughter graduate from McClure High School, and I was one of the founding members of McClure PTA at that time, and also Project Graduation, and was very active in keeping student involvement, parent involvement, teacher involvement here at McClure, as well as the elementary and middle schools in the district. I've also, as Mr. Hinson has, I've been a coach and a mentor for years with many students and worked very closely with them. I've also been an advocate for parents when they've had concerns and problems. When I was a volunteer and as being a board member, I've been on the Board of Education since 1992. And I was substitute teacher in the school district up until that time at all levels in the district. Right now, I am a healthcare administrator, and I feel that because of the job that I have and my occupation, I know a lot about finance. I am very busy in the business world itself. I'm an asset to the board, I feel in that way as far as human resources is concerned, budgets, finance, and I think that remaining on the Board of Education would also continue to benefit the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now moving to getting question number two. And Mr. Hinson is going to begin. What motivates you to become a Ferguson-Florissant School District Board Member and what do you see as the primary work of the School Board?
All you have to do, all you have to do is to go into one of our buildings. When I go to the elementary school and I see children and I see these wonderful, beautiful, exciting young people, I am encouraged about being a part of helping them change their lives and make their lives better. We know that education, the life they're up, can change their lives in many ways, so positive education can mean so much. As a board member, we have the responsibility and obligation to do things physically, responsibly, to make a transparent, to communicate to the caretakers, and responsibility more than anything to pursue an achievement. That's a part of me. As an officer of the Board, there was a time I went, each year I speak to a number of classes in the elementary and go to read. One year I was the President of the Board, and I went to, it was a third grade class, and I had the opportunity to read to them. And I explained to them what the Board does, and I told them that I was the President of the Board. It was hard to fight back tears when each and every child, when they heard that, wanted my autograph. They said, "Do you want the President of the School Board?" I said, "Yes." They said, "We want your autograph." So if everybody lined up, so when you talk about what's the exciting piece, that's the exciting piece. We have the opportunity to change the world as well. And I take that and I hold that responsibility very important in my life. The primary work of this Board is that we do those things that make this institution worthwhile. I am voice of that, ready for that, ready for that commitment. And I've already proven about my commitment to the community and I think of the people with children, and so that's why I'm excited. I look forward to being a part of this, this district.
Thank you. Mrs. Hawtai.
The question is, what motivates me to be a, oh, what motivates me to be, become a member of the Ferguson-Florissant Board of Education? And that's my passion. My passion for all of the students in our district. When I ran for the Board in 92 and I continue to run for the same reason, it's for the diversity, it's for the students at risk, students that don't always have an advocate or someone out there that will speak up for them and want to make sure that they get the best education that they can. It's for the students that are top of their class but may not be able to achieve everything that they want to because of the school district. I totally believe in public education. I feel that if you want to send your child to a private school because of religious reasons or for something that they gain, then that is the business of the parent. But I feel that no parent should have to send their student to a private school because they don't feel the public school education is the best that they can achieve. As a School Board Member, we have oversight and we hold the district accountable, we work with budgets to make sure that we remain within our budget and that the business of the district is being run. Another thing that we are as School Board members is advocates. We're advocates for the community, we're advocates for the students and for the parents themselves. And there've been many times when a parent's been upset about something and they don't know the right steps and the right way to go. Or a community member doesn't know who to call or where to go to. And so I feel strongly that I am able to help them and have always been there, ready and willing to answer their concerns and work with them.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
What motivates me to run the School Board is very simple, it's the teaching experience that I have. I can never forget a student once saying to me in the middle of the traffic to talk down the classroom. "Mrs. Brown, my pop and grand, you are a cool gangster." Well, now, of course, she said that to me, and I just looked at her and I go, "Oh." And I just looked at her and said, "Well, happy that's compliment." And it was, it was a compliment. And when that happened, and as many other experiences that I had in classroom took place, I realized it was very difficult not to love these students and to have a deep concern for their educational welfare. And that is one of the main reasons why I run. And I also would say that I was encouraged to become a School Board member by the teachers. And they said to me that you should have a good classroom knowledge, you have a good understanding of what goes on here, and it should be a benefit to us as a School Board member now. They meant, as I understand, both the pros and cons of classroom. And the teachers asking to, they encouraged me to be one of my role models and they were ones that felt that I could grow and be a School Board member and they could make a difference to this district. Now, the primary work of the School Board is first and foremost, it has to be the standard guard of the students. We absolutely must protect the students, we must prepare the students to go on into an education, advanced education, and into the marketplace where they will be credible citizens and self-sustaining adults. That is our chief purpose, is to protect the watch-up for the students and to protect As far as the role of the School Board, what I can understand is pretty, it's been pretty dark on the day. I mean, everything's in connection. As I was studying for this, I looked over, and obviously we have watch-up for the students. We need to incorporate the community's views into the education process, we have to be concerned about that. We must determine, help determine curriculum, we employ a superintendent, we improve OC financial affairs, ID legend, fiscal concerns, we have to be concerned about these things. We have to be responsible for the operation of the entire operation of the school district, but we are not to be involved in a day-to-day purpose that is not the superintendent and the administration of the school. We are to help staff's goals, we are to review and evaluate your advocates and stuff they said, and there's just so many different things to be do. I asked last time they lived, and she was already there. And said, "So..." The teachers, when it wants to ask me to run, and I certainly encourage my dad to be able to do what he can to be a School Board member, because it's very exciting to have a classroom.
Thank you. We are now on our third and our final formal question, and Mrs. Hawtai will go first. I'm going to read the question. What is your vision for the future of the Ferguson-Florissant School District?
My vision is to have a safe, fair, and equitable education for all children. Through the years, we've had some safety issues, and as we know now, it's very big in the news about safety, and I think that safety needs to be one of our most important concerns. I think that we need to make sure that everything is fair across the district. There's been times when things haven't been fair and equitable for all students. And as an advocate and as one of many of the Board Members, we also have always felt fair and equitable, fought for fair and equitable education. We have advanced in making different changes so that it is fair across the district. I truly believe in the small class size. I know that discipline can be a problem. Unfortunately, some of the many things that our students bring to us from their homes, that they come to school and they unfortunately aren't ready to learn because of what has happened in their home the night before. We need to keep the class sizes as small as we can so that the teachers can give them the one-on-one care and concern and education. As an employer, I think it's very necessary that our district give our students a chance for the future. We need to make sure that we're training and teaching people and our students on attendance and tardies and holding them accountable because someday they are going to be an employee somewhere, and someday when I'm in nursing home, they're going to be taking care of me. So I'm hoping that they get the best education and the best step forward that they can get. And I think that our district is one of the best in the nation, not just in the state, and because we are a very diverse school district, I want to keep that in forefront. But I also think that we need to remember that our students are all at different levels, and we need to give them the encouragement at whatever level they are at and help them move forward. Finance is a big problem in our district as well as in the nation, so we need to look at how, ways of increasing revenue and also ways in cutting expenditure so that we can give our students the best education that they are able to get with the strongest teachers who also are well taken care of.
Thank you. Well, we're kind of nearing the end of our School Board Candidate Forum, and we have approximately 35, 40 minutes. And so what we're going to do is this question. You didn't get any of that question? I am so sorry.
And here I am, an advocate for the world.
I am so sorry, Maggie. I am so sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Brown. I'm sorry.
Well, I kind of thought I took it out of it. Sorry, my bad. Oh, that's pretty good. Vision for our future? It's bright. We have wonderful teachers, we have an excellent administration, we have a wonderful superintendent. We have many things that are very excellent, and I think they're going to continue. We have fresh people on board, and I have creative ideas, so our future is looking very bright. And our space in the Board to do help, we must resort in classroom to a maximum teachable environment through witness, the kids, the enchant, the teachers can teach in an environment. We certainly teachable is a very important focus. We must ensure that our classroom, our home size, office size, classrooms, let's say number two, are going to be shrinking and growing. We're already an absolutely, a 30-year-old teachers to be able to maintain progress without one-on-one pursuits. We must seek ways of shrinking classroom size so we can let the teachers get everyone on one. I believe we can do this, we can. The Board can do other things to try to save effect, ensure a bright picture. And one of the things we must guard ourselves against foolish decisions. Not too long back, during a court decision, we made with the superintendent, the medical insurance, it's a crime, it's absolutely a crime to see because I have time in this situation, I'm highly satisfied in print insurance, I have, we're going to see if we send $350,000 in insurance, and that money doesn't take away from our students. It was a foolish decision, and it should not have happened, and we should guard against that type of decision. Now, if you think that $350,000 is on parity, at my age, I try to get insurance on my wife and myself, I can be $20,000 here. So you start getting that, that's a lot, but the district has lost it, and it's not a foolish decision. We need to guard tremendously against that type of decision. We must guard against any i centers on board because when we have people that are more concerned about themselves, if we not looking at their chief responsibilities, which are the students, and what is in our welfare, then we then we have board that does not work effectively. And when that happens, we must censure that type of behavior so that we can work effectively as board. And we need to be negative, the board must be effective, it must work very diligently with the superintendent and vice versa. We cannot, and we should not, ever exclude the other without its effectiveness. So we must be united to work together for our children's safety and for their education. I think that we never should forget what our chief job is, and that is to prepare our students for more advanced education and ready to the marketplace, and it should be that our desire is that they come back into our community as a self-invited adult, and that is what our goal should be, we should be silent, we should always let ourselves down, and we should push our students forward. I think that our community is seeking to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Henson.
What is, what is my vision? One of the things that you've heard me say here tonight, is about an institution of art. I quoted that a number of times, and let me explain what that is. That's a place where children get up every morning and look forward to going. That's a place where, at the end of the day, they'll want to get on the bus to go home. My two colleagues have talked about some of the real challenges they were hearing coming. I doubt anyone listening to me. I'll tell you, I am so excited about what you guys, the teachers, administrators, janitors, bus drivers, accomplished every day in this city. You guys are doing something extremely well here. Certainly, foolish things are going to, and they still need to be, with attention, of course. But we're in such a hobbled direction. See, I have a little bit different view on this, because I was in this school when I entered Ferguson Forest District in nineteen seventy-three and graduated from school in nineteen seventy-seven. It was a different environment then, especially for kids of color. And I have seen the transformation, and now look at this district as one that is poised to do some amazing things because of the people that are here every day, starting with the superintendent on down. I see this as an amazing opportunity to make history. When I go around the country at different conferences, I tell people that we're graduating in the ninety percent top. And we're majority minority school district, and the only fully accredited one in the state of Missouri. There's a positive thing going on inside this building, in these buildings, every day. We've got two elementary schools that are close to achievement gap. One of those schools just recognized as an honor school, the highest recognition in the state of Missouri with regards to that. There's positive things going on in this city, and I'm excited about it, and look forward to continuing to be a part of it. The institution of learning will be a place where children map out their careers, where we help them to design and decide what they want to be and how they'll change the world, how to become prominent citizens, and take care of the community, and look back, and reach back, and give something back. Because that's what is going on in the classroom each and every day. Modernity certainly decides the class makes difference. When we started the Hoppa Committee several years ago, we decided to take away the excuses about student-side learning. We decided then that everything that happened with regard to measure the education and the quality of education would happen inside the buildings. And that started from the superintendent on down, and it's happening on a daily basis. You guys are doing something wonderful, even to the BTSO, you guys are all obviously doing something great. I am encouraged by this. This school district was once recognized as one of the sanctions. I guarantee you, there's never been one, a majority minority school district in the state of Missouri would reset. This school district has potential to doing that, and they will do. If the superintendent is given a reward that supports him wholeheartedly, that does not take away from his daily activities and his daily responsibilities with trivial things, this superintendent, this administration, this staff will take the decision to run the section. I want to be a part of that, because I think that I've been a part of getting us to this location where we are now. And it needs to be completed, this process needs to move forward. When you start talking about what we instituted in cultural competent education, that was far we're thinking. When we started to talk about the effects in the asset and the effects of racism in the classroom, that was far we're thinking. Many districts around the country are afraid, afraid to approach sub-top, sub-sub-sub-sub-subjects. We have none, we've taken it on, we're dealing with challenges, and we're doing special things, and we need to, we need to complete that process. It is interesting to hear Mr. Brown call.
That's done.
That's done.
Yes, sir.
I did my mother.
I, I did, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to hear, but I've got to say, if Mr. Brown said something about it, leave me foolish. It is interesting that I never, I have decided that I will never, ever make a decision or comment when I really don't know the facts.
I'm done. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. We are now near the end of our school board candidate forum, and we have approximately thirty minutes left. And this question has been reserved for the audience questions. These questions were previously submitted on the floor of the note bars. And as a reminder, candidates, I want to remind you that you have two minutes max to answer each of these questions. And we're going to start back at the beginning, Mr. Brown, you're going to answer the following question first. As a proud parent of two kids of Ferguson Forest District, I am always disappointed to hear of the negative view people in the community have about the school district. What are your ideals to change the view of the school district in the community?
We have to do something about our education, you may say it's negative, but before the first, we have to say it's education. We absolutely must address the difficulties that we have. I think one of the things that I would like to see done is to have teachers evaluate what are the three things that cause education to slow down, and I'm sure we need to attack those things. I don't think the school district stands a chance, I think that the school district needs to be motivated to change some areas that will help us increase the education for our kids that may go out into future education, be prepared for it. I thought best for our kids, I want us to understand that it's certainly important for us to tackle things that hurt education and say that remarkable things are good for your also. I, I know for you, because when I walked in there, I see this, the hall of fame student, able to run that board, they had problems with education, and that's something we should be proud of, and be very proud of our kids that are our students, that how our all students did well. And I need to find ways of finding out what's slowing down the education, and what can increase it and make it better. And I think that we can do about that without caring for some of those part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. Absolutely. As a proud parent of two kids of Ferguson Forest District, I am always disappointed to hear of the negative view people in the community have about the school district. What are your ideals to change the view of the school district in the community?
I do have that very same feeling. A year ago, I was just sitting in a large conference of educators and legislators, and I still have the same, the thought that public education needs to start speaking up for itself. Because every, too often you walk up to a citizen and they'll say something negative. Tell me how public education, and immediately somebody goes to the negative. And that's the person that's ill-informed, because they make comments like that. Public education needs to continue to support itself and promote itself. When we hired the last person, our public relations person, one of the main things that the board said we needed was somebody who continued to promote all the great things that are going on. If you attend the board meeting here, you would see some amazing things every month that our students and our administrators are doing. We need to just get that information out. We individually, as parents, employees, board members, and legislators, have to continue to be advocates for the district, to stand up when somebody says something negative. Say, go find out the truth, look at what is really going on, and stop dealing with the reception, those negative perceptions. North County has the same problem, there's too many. It's not, there's nothing good there, they're wrong, look at the toilets. We all feel good about what we do, we know that we're decent people, we know that we're educated people and loving and carefree people. Our district is something special, and we have the intention to promote that openly, outwardly, and loud as possible. If it means we're going to build more on the highway, to say there's something great about public education. And I said to those administrators in Jet City, that of the five hundred something districts in this state, we need to start promoting education and the career path of educators. And we ought to, if we took five hundred something districts and everybody donated a thousand dollars like Jet City, we would have over half a million dollars to create a major campaign on promoting quality education and the career path, and we would continue to focus on promoting ourselves. You're doing something great, if somebody doesn't know that, they need to recognize.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
I choose to live in North County, I'm very proud of North County, and I choose to live in Ferguson Forest District. And I have been very hopeful on board, we have hired a, just sitting out here tonight, a communications and marketing person, and like Mr. Henson mentioned, we need to get more publicity, more deposit out there, so that the people that are naysayers or the people that are not sending their children to our schools because they think there's something negative, need to realize how great our schools are. And if they come to our board meetings and if they would read all the positive things that we're doing, I think they would also be very proud to be part of Ferguson Forest District. And so, whoever is a parent out there with your two children, I thank you for keeping your children in our schools, and I encourage you to remain active and to also let everyone in the area know where your children go and how proud you are to have them in our school district. Because it is by word now that we continue to let others know of our district.
Thank you. I just want to remind the audience, you know, due to time restrictions, I want to make sure that everyone understands that not all the questions will be asked or answered each night. Mr. Henson will answer the next question first. What is the biggest challenge facing our district?
It's what the state is looking to do with my federal government. I think one of the things, certainly financially, every school district in the state, probably around the country right now, is trying to decide on how are we going to change the public education at a quality level. And that's, that's the responsibility that we take on as board. That is probably the biggest challenge that we have. And I think that's something that, as voters, we have to be, have a responsibility to try and make sure we make changes, and the legislative, those folks who make the decision process, and we have to take on that responsibility and do what we need to. And same courage of, say, educated on the policies of what he's saying. I think that's the biggest challenge facing this.
Mr. Henson. Thank you. Mr. Brown?
The biggest challenge facing us is probably how we're going to find a way to take care of some of these that we have. We certainly are, and we're having time for that. And I think that is one of the things we must certainly, we have to be very careful to make sure that we are using our money correctly, and so we'll have enough to take care of all the things that are necessary in the education system. It is a great concern, we should, I think that the freedom of thinking can happen, and be able to do these in the district, yes, I think it's financial problems that are going to be facing us.
Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Definitely. Definitely finance is one of our biggest problems. And getting more revenue, the state funding, but another problem that education faces today is legislative mandating laws on how we do it. And Mr. Clark sitting out in the audience is one who has invited the legislators for many years in trying to, for our local control and making sure that we are able to educate our children in the best way that we find that we can, but definitely finance is also a big part of it.
Thank you so much. Mr. Hall can, we'll go first with the next question. What can you do to ensure that Ferguson Forest District continues to provide a quality education in our current budgeted climate?
I am one person on board, seven members, and we all are focused on the same trail as far as budgets and as far as finances for our school district. We all think in, in different ways, but we, but we are also very concerned on how we spend our money and how we can get more revenue into our district. So being a old person on board will help ensure that we do provide this responsibility and hold all of our sayings, everyone, and everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Would you read these questions for me?
Yes, sir. What can you do to ensure that Ferguson Forest District continues to provide a quality education in our current budgeted climate?
I think the money sometimes is as important as, as actually a rest, a, a rest, a value sometimes. We spend more money in the station than on students and any other, per person in any other nation in the world. We're waiting for, because we have a problem, and I don't know, but it's not, but it's not the E-type. We have to look at the budget and make sure that we cut things and repay things out that are less important than the teacher-student relationship. I think if you give a teacher a blackboard, some chalk, a student, a teacher, they do miracles. So I'm not sure it's all the things that we have to have to make for better teaching. I just think that we have to have, the classroom environment is very teachable. And that's the thing that I would like to see done. I know that money is very important, I understand all that, but I'm saying that we must protect the teacher and student relationship, and we must always maintain that. And what I want to say is, I mean, you're not wanting to see teachers, you're not wanting to see classrooms expanding, and I want to see the trades, the teachers and students, and have the relationships necessary one-on-one to create the better education for the kids.
Thank you. Mr. Henson?
Every year, the board sets goals centered around the objective of student achievement. And each year, we have that responsibility to continue to promote that and make sure that's happening. One of the ways we're going to continue to promote a quality education and build on quality education, even in trying times, is what I mean. It's the belief within everyone, administrator, teacher, that all these children can learn despite, it's how I run my household, if I'm laid off, I still got to make it work. And I've got every parent, everybody who's owned a piece of property, I've been in that time of self, that situation, you know how to make it work, and you know how to make it work. And you know how to make it work well. If I've got to turn $2 for one, then that's what we have to do. And there's no better people to do that than folks who have been on one side or the other. Let me tell you, this district has a lot of quality talented people. And I feel really comfortable that we're going to make it. We've been able to this one to do cut budgets, less than $800 two years ago. Nearly 10% of our budget without a layoff. We've come up with creative ways to reduce our costs. Our classroom signs are still far below what they, what MSA says. So we're doing some good things and we're going to continue that way. A strong board with those objectives to help superintendent and administrators do what they need and give them those tools that they need to do well will be fine. That's how we're going to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, you're going to go first with the next question. My question is in regards to the ad in the first paper saying you did not vote for the lifetime insurance for the superintendent. Can you explain the board's minutes that say you did vote for him?
That's the reference to me. They need to, I mean, if they don't have the answer, I'll be glad to answer that.
First and foremost, I have no doubt.
Okay, we're just going to track that question though. We're just going to track that question because we want everyone to have an equal opportunity to answer. We'll go to the next question. But Mr. Brown, you're going to go first. What type of measures would be taken to help prepare students for college achievement tests to help raise our test scores?
Well, test scores. I will never forget in this school here, being in classroom where we were going over the files. And we were giving the students, myself and another teacher, the questions they're going to have on the file. And we gave them the questions verbatim and they wouldn't pay attention. And like I was saying, I do not understand we're giving them the answers to your file and they still wouldn't pay attention. And that's why, yeah, if we want to prepare our kids to do well, we are going to have to teach our kids what it means to be a student, what the consequences are and if you fail, be a student. And I think that they need to understand that without being able to go on into higher education, their chances at being successful in life are going to be diminished. And we have to impress upon them, number one, that they must learn. And we have to do that. And until we do that, until they understand the really importance of it, you're not going to improve them by any specific program or whatever. You're going to have to first reach out through their parents and let them know that this is the serious specification that we need. And I think that they can be capital invested. We can help them be capital invested to learn more and to increase their abilities to behave themselves, things like that. Until they understand the importance of it. And we still think that importance is a difficult task.
Thank you. Mr. Hinson? Yes, sir. What type of measures would be taken to help prepare students for college achievement tests to help raise our test scores?
Sir, and I take this approach that Mr. Brown, I tell you what, there's some amazing students here. Disappointment is an issue no matter where you go. And teachers have already proven it, it's about 10%. 10% is not worth saying that we're not going to do any better unless everybody gets it together. There's 90% of those kids here that deserve everything that we can bring them. We've got professional development or administrative. We've got PPIs. We've got reading programs for teachers in the classroom. We've proved that usually if you increase the reading process by a third grade, we close jail cells. Let me tell you something. This district is disappointing. We're doing some amazing things with different products, with different programs, from smart boards to PPIs with it, to interventions that are in place to increase that. You know, our students are doing great. Our students need the personal attention from administrators. I'm not going to put this on the parents. I'm not going to put this just on students. Everybody has played a role in making sure that education is first and foremost and that it's the best that we can offer. Like I said earlier, when Hopper, we talked about it, we're going to take away all of the excuses for kids not learning inside the building. Once they close those doors, there are six or seven hours and we have to make that happen. And the administrators here took that on. They took on that responsibility and you guys are doing it. We're not going to allow that 10% to break us down.
Thank you. Mr. Halliday? Absolutely. What type of measures would be taken to help prepare students for college achievement tests to help raise our test scores?
We are at first time tutoring students and taking achievement tests and preparing for achievement. And we are working with them, trying to help them do the best that they can in taking achievement tests. We also in classrooms must continue to work with them and help them. Not all students are good at taking tests. So continuing to mentor them, to educate them. And the process of making the test as well as the education itself that they need for the test is what we're trying to do and trying to help every student achieve.
Thank you. And we have come to our last question of the night. And Mr. Hinson is going to go first. What can be done to assure that students are equipped with the information they need to be successful in college or post-secondary endeavors?
Sir? It has to be back to the last question. I think one of the things that we have done, that we see we put in place is student education throughout our high schools. That's looking at the technology and looking at things that kids need from engineering to science to math. We've been put in place, sort of culinary and other skills that children can learn and prepare themselves for the future. The thing that we have to do is to stay diligent on the new technology, diligent on what life is saying to our children and what is needed. Looking at where technology is going, looking at where the world is going and trying to create a curriculum. And student, and student achievement, it has to be the first and foremost thing that we look at. We, as administrators and as a board, we have a responsibility to see what the world is needing and to design this educational institution around them. That's how to prepare our students. That's what we need to continue to do. Again, if you're inside now looking at this, coming to our board meetings, knowing something about this, you would know they're moving in that direction. And it is encouraging about the things that are going on. I look at the staff that Dr. McGoyle has built and is building. And it is very impressive of what things are going on. And I look at how people are working on a database harder than they've ever worked with limited information, limited tools, but they're still getting it done at a high level. That's how to prepare our students. And preparing our students by giving them something very special. And the most important thing we can do for each and every child is to let them know we believe in them. And once they did that, there is no stopping. There is no measure of how far they can go. But we have to do that first. Let them know that we believe in them. Amazing stuff.
Thank you. Mr. Halliday?
We have A-Plus program and our district has had for many years. And we're partnering with the community colleges in trying to encourage students in high school to understand what the A-Plus program is. Unfortunately, several, many students feel that A-Plus, you just have an A-plus to get into junior college, to get into the program. So we are working with the schools, trying to help them encourage the students to get into the A-Plus program, even if they are C-level students or also they need to realize for their career that they love students and volunteer work. And we're starting in the freshman year in promoting A-plus education. And Mr. Hinson talked about other programs that we have here, such as culinary programs. And many, not all students are wanting to go to college and aren't in the mode to go to college. We are preparing them in many other areas so they will have a successful life.
Thank you. And Mr. Brown?
Would you mind if I gave you a question right here?
Yes, sir. What can be done to assure that students are equipped with the information they need to be successful in college or post-secondary endeavors?
Well, certainly we need to have the students determine whether their interests in life are. And when they are determined, those things start to determine this, this is looking at their education process. We need to help identify them. And we need to help them take classes that will help them in those areas to go on, figure it out, continue on in college opportunities, take college-type courses in high school level two, in those types of endeavors in college. They just have to focus and to make them see the directions they want to go in, whether it's necessary to get to that point, what kind of classes they can take, counseling, lawyer, and schools, and go down into those directions. It's very important to help and guidance towards where they want to go. Now, I know they're going to change lives at times when they arrive, but we have to really be encouraged and pushing them and still assess these learning and have rounded educations that they look out and become more specific at the direction they want to go.
Thank you. Now, we're going to allow for our candidates to have two minutes for any closing remarks they would like to make. And Mr. Halliday, we're going to let you go first.
Surprise, surprise, right? I am not running for reelection just to put another year in my belt to say I've been on board of education for extra seven years. I'm running for reelection because I have a passion for one, for North County. I have a very big passion for Berthas Forest District. And most of all, I have a passion for our students and our children. I want the best for them. And I feel that I have always been strong advocate for all children as well as for parents and the community. And that is why I am seeking reelection and I ask you to vote.
Thank you. And Mr. Brown?
I'm ready to go to school board to take our cases. And as I'm on a very best of it, I want to get it successful. I want it to go on and have a wonderful life being a companion of the community. And citizens in the community and be subsisting. Primarily came this title of believing as subsubvention. I just absolutely enjoy the area and I develop and care for them. And I want to continue to serve the community and our students because the community is getting something very wonderful to be in my own education. And I owe the community something and I want to serve it. Because we never repay what it has provided to my honor. And I'm watching the school board and I'm making difference in our students' lives. And that's why I'm here for a year and a half.
Thank you. And Mr. Hinson?
I have committed my entire life to supporting this district and this community. I volunteered later than that was possible. I've given my time entirely to it and the power to grant would change it. I want to serve for another term at cost. This school district is under very vast spoken to do something amazing. I want to prove to our students, to our parents, to the community, to the world that we can educate children wherever they are, despite any obstacles outside of the building that we have no control over. Our kids deserve it. Superintendent and administrative staff, you need a strong board supportive of superintendent. We've got one of the best in the country, you know that. He needs the support from the board, a positive board, not combative board, but guys who work together, guys who can work together to make it something great and be supportive. There's nothing that we can do more that prove to our students and our community that we have something special. We're going to do that. If this board is right, if I'm brought back to the board, I'll see that it happens. By the end of this term, three years, we'll be on that level of distinction. There's no greater honor and we can do it. And I'll make sure of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And this concludes the board's PTO Berthas Forest District School Board forum. The board PTO would like to thank all the board candidates for their participation in this unique school board forum. The board PTO also would like to remind you to please get out to the polls on April 2nd to cast your votes. Thank you for being an excellent audience and for your support of the Berthas Forest District. And we wish you a great evening. Thank you.